Good evening. We'll call to order this Coon Rapids City Council meeting for Tuesday, January 17th, 2017. If you could please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could you please call the roll?
Here.
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 Councilmember Geisler.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Wells.
Here.
Mayor Cook.
Here.
Thank you. First item on our agenda this evening is to adopt this evening's agenda. Motion by Geisler, second by Wells, to adopt the agenda. Any discussion or corrections? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. There it is. You had it nice and front and center, then I moved it. So, we actually have a proclamation this evening that's kind of exciting. If we could get the folks from Snowflake Days up front and center. It's time again. It's time again. Snowflake Days. And what a fine marquee you have picked out this year. Yes, alright. So let me read the proclamation and then I'll have you introduce yourselves. So whereas the 2017 Snowflake Days celebration includes numerous events over three weeks for all individuals, including a medallion hunt, Mayor's Cup simulator golf tournament, cookies and canvas, waffle breakfast, children's carnival, chili challenge, family fun day at the Coon Rapids Ice Center, community sock hop, and many, many other things for our marquee to attend. Whereas, Snowflake Days will kick off with the Mayor's simulated golf tournament at Bunker Hills Golf Course on Thursday, January 26th. Whereas, Snowflake Days will culminate on Sunday, February 12th, with a family fun day held at the Coon Rapids Ice Center. Whereas, many volunteers and community organizations have dedicated their time and talents to create this exciting winter celebration for the benefit of all citizens of Coon Rapids. Now, therefore, I, Jerry Cook, Mayor of the City of Coon Rapids, on behalf of the Coon Rapids City Council, hereby proclaim January 26th through February 12th, 2017, to be Coon Rapids Snowflake Days. Be it further proclaimed that all citizens are encouraged to participate in this community celebration and enjoy the numerous activities and events proclaimed the 17th day of January 2017. Here. I'll give you the mic. Tell us who you are. We all know, but go ahead.
Hello, I'm Diane Busta. I am president of Snowflake Days.
And I am Sue Leggett.
This year's marquee.
Our 2017 marquee. I can't believe it's time for Snowflake Days already. So, thank you for the proclamation. I wanted to just highlight a couple of things that we're doing. The, as you indicated, the simulated golf tournament is our kickoff event, and I heard tonight that there's only room for a couple more teams. So, that is always a big event, and we're really excited that they're back again this year. So, if you still want to play in it, get ahold of Tim Anderson out at Bunker Hills, and he'll get you hooked up. The adult medallion hunt will begin on Saturday, the 28th, and we have a $500 prize again this year for the winner. So, I'm excited about that. I hope the snow stays, at least for another week or two. We have, the children's medallion hunt has grown each year now for the last couple of years, and we really think the Coon Rapids Fire Social Group, they provide a couple of $200 gift cards for bikes for each one of the winners, a boy and girl winner for that. So we're glad that's coming back. And of course, the sock hop and the carnival, the 28th and the 4th respectively, so they'll both be at Eisenhower School. Those will be a lot of fun. I have to flip my page here. I don't want to forget anything. The chili challenge is back again this year, and Lori Anderson is working really hard on that with a whole bunch of other folks that are involved. It's been a great turnout the last couple of years. So, I think this year it's at the VFW, so I hope everybody comes out and participates. That one's always a lot of fun. Back again this year is our Snowflake Days waffle breakfast. We're really excited because all the proceeds from this waffle breakfast will benefit the 5K, 10K, and kids' run for the 4th of July. So the Coon Rapids Fire Department's working really hard on promoting that, and they will have for sale their new calendars for 2017 there. So, that's pretty exciting. And then, to close out the celebration, we have the family fun day at the ice arena. They've really worked hard this year, and they've got a huge event planned with lots of activities going on. And our cookies and canvas will be held that day. That event has really grown each year, so I think last year we had 50 kids probably, and we expect more than that this year. So, the Snowflake Days website is updated with the events that we have confirmed so far. There are some RSVP forms on there for a few of the events. It kind of helps us to know for supplies and things to buy. So, check out our website at coonrapidsnowflakedays.wi believe dot com. I think it is. I can't think right now. I can't think right now.
If you Google it.
You Google Coon Rapids Snowflake Days, you'll get there. Anyway, I want to thank everybody in the city, all of our supporters, all the citizens that come out and support us. We really appreciate it, and without you, we wouldn't be able to do this celebration. This is our 54th year of hosting, so I'm glad that it's still around. We have a lot of fun with it. And just thanks to everybody's sponsors, participants, everybody, we really appreciate your support.
Excellent. We're still not bringing back motorcycle racing, though.
Not yet.
Not yet, huh? Jones, was that the one I'm going to give to them, or? Okay, we'll figure it out later. You'll get the actual proclamation later.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Dan. Thank you for all your work.
Thanks.
Susan, thank you for stepping up and doing the marquee thing.
Thank you.
That's awesome.
(applause)
Alright. Next on our agenda this evening, we have a couple of guests here from Mercy Hospital that are going to talk about the expansion project, but no capes or hats. It's a little disappointing, Sarah, but...
I would not have to do that. I wouldn't even try. Thank you for having us. Craig Mullis here.
From our community outreach area. I know, you know Craig well and know of his work, and we certainly appreciate the partnership that we have with the City of Coon Rapids, and thanks for taking the time to have us here. I've been going around to the city councils in the area, talking about some work that we have going on that I think is pretty exciting.
I think we have to actually interject, then you are Sarah Krieger, and you are the president...
Sorry. Thank you.
...of Mercy Hospital.
Yes. Sarah Krieger, I'm the president of Mercy Hospital, senior vice president for Alina Health for the North Region.
Thank you.
So, a lot of plans going on, and the city has been involved with us as it relates to the Mercy campus. So let me just give you a little idea of what I'm going to talk about. There is a lot of change happening in healthcare, notwithstanding the presidential election and people asking about what might happen to Obamacare. But from a care delivery perspective, we think it's really important that we connect with our communities just around some of the changes that are happening, some of the investments and developments in hospital services in the community and the market. So, what I want to do is just a little bit of background that I think is important to kind of set the stage, talking a little bit about the case for change, why we think we need to examine how we do deliver hospital care, some of the investments that are underway that I think you should be really excited about and are very positive, and if there are any questions, be happy to take those. I just want to start with something that I think is reflective of the care in this community, a longstanding, really commitment to healthcare in the community. These awards are representative of the awards that have been given to Mercy Hospital and Unity Hospital in the last year. And two highly accomplished hospitals, both part of the Alina system, but you can see we're highly accredited, both from a, just from a perspective of organizations that independently look at hospital services, as well as from organizations that come in and accredit us or provide certification. So, two longstanding, more than 50 years, hospitals in the community that have really been focused on quality and outcomes. I show this slide. It is right off from this past fall, the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services website, and they, for the first time, came out with star ratings for hospitals across the country. And this is a map of the Twin Cities. Every dot represents a hospital. The color of the dot represents the number of star ratings that that hospital's been assigned by the Center for Medicare and Medicaid Services in 2016, based on quality, mortality, patient experience. What you see here is Unity Hospital represented by a green dot, which indicates a four-star hospital. The yellow dot is three-star. The blue star is a five-star hospital, the blue dot. You'll notice there's one on this map, and that's Mercy Hospital. There's one other one in the state. That's in a little community south of the Twin Cities called Rochester. So, we're really proud of this. And one of the things that I believe strongly is, while the awards are wonderful, the recognition is amazing, the real reason that our teams commit to this kind of quality is because of every patient that comes into our hospital, and absolutely wanting to be the best, and that commitment is pretty amazing to see and be a part of. So, I would say hospital care, healthcare is changing quite a bit. It used to be that hospitals really were kind of the central focus of the healthcare system. Every community wanted a hospital. They take a lot of pride in that. We recognize that. We've historically been reimbursed when people are sick or injured, and it's kind of a sad statement when we say, oh, it's a good year financially for the hospital because lots of people in the community had a flu. It's not necessarily a good thing. So we need to work around that all the time. The more patients we had, the better off we did, and again, not necessarily indicative of health, but more of illness and injury. In the past, we could run a hospital with general medical staff in the area. Family medicine physicians, family medicine-trained physicians could come in, they could do their rounds during the day and get back to their clinics, and that's how we provided the care. And it really achieved most of the quality standards that you could use and could, needed to have in a hospital. All of that is changing. With the reform focus, we're really seeing an emphasis on health and wellness, which is so much better than being rewarded for people being sick or injured. The primary focus, the primary relationship is shifting to the primary care physician and the clinic environment outpatient setting, hoping to kick actually people out of the hospital. What we're also learning is hospitals are almost becoming big ICUs. If you're really sick, you belong in a hospital. If you don't, we try to keep you out. It's not a place you want to be unless you have to. But if you are in the hospital, you want access to specialty programs, and robust specialty programs get better outcomes. So, having physicians who are trained in subspecialty areas makes a difference for the sickest and injured patients. So we work to achieve that. Those things make it hard nowadays for every hospital to try to be everything to everyone. It just is becoming increasingly different, difficult to do that, and that approach is having to be, we believe, examined in how we provide care in this community. Additionally, the investments that are needed in hospitals are becoming increasingly difficult to fund because we do, we are seeing declining volumes. This is a graph of the volume trends, the average daily census between the Mercy and Unity campuses. Over the last five years, we've seen a decrease of about 9% of our patient days. That's a good thing. We're keeping people out of the hospital. It does make it a little bit harder to run the hospital business in declining volume. Our surgical cases are down about 15% over the same time period. Some of that is the fact that people are choosing other options in surgery. Some of that is the economy, so if people can put off surgery, they're doing that because of the copays. But again, surgery used to be quite an economic engine, and still is actually for a hospital. So to have that declining causes challenges for us. Some of our reality, this is a map of the North Metro area, one that I like to show because I think it tells the story about why we really have an opportunity to do something different in the North Metro area. You can see the two hospitals on this map, Mercy Hospital and Unity Hospital. We're about a little less than nine miles apart. The colors show you different elements of what we call our primary service area. If you took the green area that's on this map, it would depict the area that there's overlap between Mercy's primary service area and Unity's. So this is where we draw from the same patients for most of our business. The yellow sections in the lower part of the map are unique to Unity. The darker teal area is unique to Mercy's primary service area, but you can see a big section in green that is an overlap. The larger space that's covered by the lighter teal is what we call Mercy's secondary service area. So Mercy, having many specialty services that are needed for communities farther north and northwest, we often get patients transferred into us because of the specialty care we have. So we have a much bigger draw, geographic draw, because of our specialty services. So we realize we're serving the same communities with many of the same services. We compete for the same resources to do that, whether that's the capital that's needed to fund our facilities and the technology investments, or really the limited pool of talented staff and physicians. It's hard to staff and really bring together the, what we need, the resources to run these two facilities. And lastly, as I mentioned, declining volume for both hospitals over time. So we're charting a new path. We have a few principles that we're using to really plan our services going forward. We believe in keeping the most frequently used services on both campuses. We have two busy emergency departments. Not sure if you're aware, but Mercy is the fourth busiest emergency department in the Twin Cities. The only ones that are larger are the three Level 1 trauma centers of Hennepin Regions and North Memorial. So, as a Level 2 trauma center serving this market, we see about 64,000, 65,000 patients a year. Unity is in the mid-50s. So both very busy EDs, things like that. Outpatient services, some basic inpatient care, we believe should be provided close to home and should stay on both campuses. We also believe that there's an opportunity to improve access to the quality specialty services, so that patients can stay in this market. There are patients that still have to go into the Minneapolis or St. Paul area for some specialty services, that if we think about how to provide those differently in the community on one of our campuses, that we actually could provide more services and keep patients in the community. We brought forward, as part of this plan, the opportunity for some investments that Alina could see as having a good return. And before we came up with this plan, I think it was very difficult for us to figure out how to fund the investments that we really have needed and are a bit overdue in both of our hospitals. So I'm going to show you a little bit about the investments that now are possible because of how we're thinking about how to provide care. And one of the main concerns we hear, and Craig has done a lot of work with our communities, the county, our partners in the community, is really thinking about how we address the mental health and the addiction crisis that's going on in our communities. And it doesn't take a lot to flip through the paper and hear the news about addiction issues, opioid, heroin issues, mental health issues. A lot of us know someone who struggles with mental illness, and we don't believe as a society, as a healthcare delivery system, that we've been doing justice to the care we provide for the mentally ill and those who struggle with addiction. So that has been a big part of the element of priorities for us as we've done this work. Not sure if folks are aware of this, but we actually had an opportunity to change how we provide care about a year and a half ago with the opening of the Mother Baby Center at Mercy Hospital with Children's. And we did essentially decide, and hadn't planned this long before, but as it came, became closer to the opening of the Mother Baby Center, we did make the difficult decision to close OB services at Unity Hospital and consolidate them all into the Mother Baby Center at Mercy. And it's really been very successful from our perspective. One of the really catalysts for this decision was Children's Hospital and Clinics, who Alina has strong relationship with at our Abbott Northwestern and United campuses. And Children's, who runs the special care nursery services at both those, the NICU, said to us, you know, we would love to provide care in the North Metro with you, Alina. So can we come up with a plan? But the deal is, you've got to have, you've got to figure out one place that you want us, because we don't have a team to put at two hospitals. And so, the opportunity with the Mother Baby Center and partnership with Children's allowed us to really come to terms with one large program with a partner like Children's to provide care to the sickest babies is a better way to serve the market than two smaller and medium-sized programs. And so we did consolidate those services. We have Children's. Now we've actually more than doubled the special care nursery census, so less babies have to leave the community to get care. They can stay here now because of the children's relationship, and it's really been positive on many fronts. We were able to move all the employees over from the Unity program who wanted to be a part of the new Mercy Mother Baby Center, and we still needed to recruit. So talented labor nurses are hard to find, and this really was positive. Last, we have a growing program. Our volume is up about 5% since the Mother Baby Center opened. We had lost, both hospitals had lost volume to Maple Grove when it opened a few years ago, and this has been our opportunity to bring an attractive program into the market that keeps moms here. I get that some of this is about, you know, having a baby at the new flashy Mother Baby Center, but the fact of the matter is, what's now a 3,500-delivery program allows us the opportunity to make the investments and have the services that will, I think, continue to ensure this is a thriving program. So, we're proud of this facility. If you haven't seen it, it's really beautiful, but more importantly, the care is excellent there. So, we're on a journey of what I call a one-hospital, two-campuses plan. On January 1st, our, actually Mercy and Unity merged under one hospital license. And that plan really is a focus of offering services, again, at campus, at both campuses patients need most often, evolving the location of specialty services for the market for stronger programs, being able to recruit excellent physicians and staff that we need. They, you know, what we found with physicians, the talent pool, they want to be in a robust program. They want to be in a place where they're busy and they have thriving practices, and they can have that when we really bring our programs together. So that's a big deal. Enhancing our facilities and program offerings and making those investments, and I'll talk about that in here in a minute. One of our staff members mentioned this as it relates to the Mother Baby Center. She said, you know, we took a strong program at Unity and a strong program at Mercy, and we put them together, and we created the powerhouse of a tertiary program for the market. And this is really, you know, this is a unique market. We've realized with Mercy being a specialty hospital, that if we don't do something, it's not available in the market. And so that is a, that's a whole different level of obligation to make sure we can do this. It's not like being in St. Paul or Minneapolis where I tell people, you can't swing a dead cat without hitting the hospital because they're all over the place. But that's not the case out here in the North Metro. So we're committed to that. And then, really, all of this to most effectively meet patient and community needs. So one of our first next, or I should say our next bold moves with one hospital and two campuses, is to advance our mental health and addiction services. And we're actually going to be moving mental health, the inpatient mental health program from the Mercy campus to the Unity campus in March, late February, early March. This, as I mentioned before, is an area of number one concern when we talk to our community partners about what we can do to improve the health of our community. What the opportunity is here is, we have an adult mental health unit, about 39 beds on the Mercy campus. We have an addiction program and a Jerry Psych program on the Unity campus. We know that 64% of patients who have an addiction issue also have a mental health diagnosis. And we have both programs, but they're not together. So the patients don't get access to the full continuum of service that they need. So this really allows us to bring a more comprehensive program for our patients into the community, improve quality. We're going to have a much improved healing environment. I would say the unit that we have on the Mercy campus has been very, very much undersized from a programming perspective. The Unity campus has more space, and I'll show you in a minute some of the things we're going to be able to enhance there. And we're really also developing and focusing on outpatient services. And many of our mental health patients, if they get care upstream in their crisis mode, then don't have to end up in our hospital ED or inpatient unit. That's a good thing for all of us. So, trying to help that patient feel that they can deal with issues earlier before it becomes a critical acute issue is something we have really kind of an overall goal for. Our providers and staff are excited about this. They are going to have the opportunity to tap into their colleagues who have expertise in a certain subspecialty areas to help care for those patients. So that's a big deal. The one-hospital, two-campus initiative has kind of two big buckets of work that we've been focused on right now. One is what happened on January 1st, and that's that single license. So we, both campuses now are, fall under the name of Mercy Hospital and under the license of Mercy Hospital, and they're known as our Mercy Campus and our Unity Campus. That change was very positive. It's good for patients. It's good from a efficiency of how we provide care. When we're under one license, we can move patients between our two campuses without having to discharge them from one hospital and readmit them to another. It's one episode of care. We can transfer patients by ambulance between our campuses without that patient getting a bill for a hospital, or an ambulance transfer. And again, just in general, stronger, stronger programs. From a facility and program investment perspective, if you haven't driven by the Mercy campus lately, there's a lot of construction going on, and the city's been a great partner in helping us get that done. You see the list here of areas we're able to touch in this renovation, and it's really impressive. The first phase of our new ICU renovation will open up next week, and it's beautiful and something we've sorely needed for some time, given the acuity of patients we have. All-new operating rooms, a new orthopedic joint center, sterile processing, ED expansion, some really basic, really infrastructure items like kitchen, new kitchen, a parking ramp that we've needed. I think everybody would agree, parking has been an issue for us in central utilities. On the Unity campus, most of the renovation investment there is around the mental health programs. This is a, just an aerial rendering of the Mercy campus. On the far left is Coon Rapids Boulevard, just to get you grounded. On the lower part is Dakota. If you look in the upper right-hand corner, that's the new Mother Baby Center. Everything that's in color on this graphic is what's being touched by the renovation. So, a lot of, a lot of the facility is getting upgraded and it's overdue. On the far right is the parking ramp. It will be nice. It won't look like a parking ramp out in the front of our building. I think it's going to be an enhancement to the entryway. Coming onto the Mercy campus has been something, from my perspective, hasn't felt like a very welcoming environment. It wasn't a very pretty building, the way it was set up before. It was even hard to find the front door. We're going to solve for that now with how we're configuring the parking ramp. Just below that, in the little orange space, is the emergency department expansion. To the back of the building, the teal and the dark blue, the dark blue area there is additional square footage with brand-new operating rooms. Pop out underneath it in the gray area is sterile processing, just represents what's happening in the basement below that. And then inside, the teal is all pre-op and post-op. And then inside, the teal is all pre-op and post-op. And, you know, this maybe doesn't seem like a big deal, but the way we were set up currently, many times we had to take patients back into the pre-op area, and we couldn't bring any family members, because the spaces are so tight. And that, that's a hardship for loved ones to not be able to be together during that. In the middle is just some kitchen and waiting areas. And then the two floating floors, the purple is the new ICU, and then the top floor will be the orthopedic center. So a lot of investment. I would say the facility itself on this project is about $75 million worth of investment in this community. When we move the mental health population to the Unity Campus, we will backfill all of that space with MedSurg space. So that will be the new orthopedic unit. And we're a busy hospital. We're full all the time. We're shipping a lot of patients out of this hospital right now, because we don't have beds, and this is really going to be a huge relief valve for us. So we want to keep growing, and we think we've got a plan to do that. So it's just some artis renderings. That's the parking ramp on the left and the new front entrance in the center. So it will be, again, a much improved from a welcoming perspective. Our new entryway on the inside. On the Unity Campus, I'll just show you this. This has been, of course, a big topic in the Fridley area and Blaine, as we've talked about what's happening on the Unity Campus. This is a footprint of what will be our new mental health unit, which is going to be 40 all-private rooms, the first hospital in Alina to have all-private rooms for our mental health patients. We think that's really a big deal. We're going to have what we call neighborhoods or communities. Our mental health patients are sometimes in our hospital for weeks and months. And that's not because they necessarily need hospital care. Many times that's because we have no way to discharge them. We don't have state hospital beds and other things in the market to support the transition. So it's important that we have programming to support these patients. We have different areas where I think it's going to be just a much more healing environment, much more interactive. The spaces on this slide actually show you art and recreational spaces that we're going to be able to add, as well as physical fitness area. The large blue rectangular space is actually where we're going to have a physical fitness center for our mental health patients, which is, we think, really critical to their mental health and well-being. So I'm really proud of this. I think it demonstrates a huge investment on the part of Alina and to the community. I think it's built on the strength of a, of strong hospitals and teams that are committed to the community. I'm just so amazed every day what I see our staff and physicians doing to make sure the best care is provided. And we're excited about enhancing care even, even more and building on the strong programs that are there. And it really does position us, I believe, to meet the challenges of the healthcare delivery system in the future. In addition to the investments Alina's making in clinics in the local market and other outpatient services, which are a big deal as well, I, you know, I'm excited about it. I think it's positive. So we're open and available. We're going to have an open house on the Unity Campus on February 27th. Would invite you to come and see what we're doing on our mental health programs. We're available to be a resource if there's anything going on in the, in the city that you would like to connect us to, and we want you to please feel like you have an engaged partner with us in whatever the community health needs are. So I'm happy to answer questions if you have them. I appreciate the time to tell our story a little bit. It's, it's, it's good to get the word out, and people are saying, you know, what's going on over there, so.
Well, it's a significant change when you're blending or tying the services together there, so it's really good information. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
When do you think, when do you anticipate being done with the construction on the Coon Rapids Campus, then?
So construction on, on the Mercy Campus is going to take through the end of 2018. We're probably first quarter of 2019 to be safe. We started, broke ground in the spring on the parking ramp that should be done this summer, and it really kind of, it was kind of the dominoes of, we had to start with what the expansion areas were, and then build those out, and then we could come back in and do some renovation. But it's, it's tight there right now. Our emergency department's really feeling it, because we have some key areas that are under renovation, so about two more years we should be done.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
With the growth and expansion of, say, the orthopedic unit at Mercy, are you anticipating or working toward growth of kind of supporting businesses around Mercy? For example, there are orthopedic companies out there, Twin Cities Orthopedics, other orthopedic companies. Are you, are you anticipating more build-out around Mercy of those kinds of?
So the, the private group, Twin Cities Orthopedics, is a very strong partner. They're a primary orthopedic group. They do have their own office. They have a surgery center in Fridley, actually not far from Unity. I don't know if they'll move on the campus necessarily, but we're in discussions with them about, you know, do we need other outpatient services in the, in the immediate area? Should that right be, be right on campus, or should we look for another site that would be kind of an outreach area? So I don't know of anything immediate, immediately on the horizon for physician practice space. The specialty center across the street that opened up about two years ago is almost full now. I think they've got one little spot that's left. The, the medical office building that's right on the, on our campus is struggling. So we're kind of in discussions with them about maybe other tenants for that building. But we have good, really good relationships with our physician partners, and we'll see where that evolves. More outpatient care might drive that.
Excellent. Any other questions? Councilmember Kicker?
You had mentioned, you know, the changing healthcare environment, and you were getting into health and wellness. Do you anticipate, or are you currently doing programs in the community around health and wellness?
We, we do have, and Craig can probably speak to some of the things that we're doing. We do a lot of screening initiatives, especially we, actually, Alina's has a health van and a program that actually was started at Mercy and Unity to get out and do heart screenings. We have partnerships with the schools around student health and screening and really trying to help keep, keep the youth, help them make good decisions about being healthy, and help them identify health potential opportunities. So that's very positive. We have a family youth program that is around weight management and activity level. So there really are several things that we're doing in partnership with the county and with the school systems. We have a parish nurse program that helps support the churches. Craig, what other ones am I missing?
Maybe I could just add that we're screening about 2,000 youth a year through the school district, New York City School District. And we just, we've received a two-year grant from the state to expand services. And Coon Rapids High School is kind of a star of that, because they have, for example, we partner with the Y through the grant we got from the state, and they come in and they do preschool programs for the kids, and the kids are just showing up in masks to do this, exercise and nutrition education and things like that. Like Sarah said, our parish nurse program actually partners with 35 faith communities. We do a lot with public health with the county, so there's a lot of other things I won't take the time to mention. But we, one of the things we want to do is maybe in follow-up to our meetings with the city council, let me get you a newsletter or more information about some of those programs, is we really want to try to work with the community too, so thank you.
We have a program that we've initiated with the Y, trying to help prevent falls in the elderly, so I'm trying to remember what's the name of that step.
Well, there's movement, there's falls prevention.
Yeah, falls prevention. So really, really trying to get out there. And, and I have to say, most of our, if we think about our heart care program, our cancer care program, all of those have baked into them really a lot of preventative and wellness initiatives. So, you know, there's, there's all sorts of things we could do, but a huge commitment around that. Good question, thank you.
Any other questions?
We're around, so if you think of them later, please.
Thank you very much for coming in and presenting this to us and to present it to the community. It is very important, and thank you for being such good partners for us.
Well, thank you for letting us provide care to the market and the community and the members. We, we're, it's an honor for us, so thank you for that.
Thanks, thanks, Greg. Back to our regularly scheduled meeting. Next on our agenda is our minutes.
Move to adopt the minutes of January 3rd. Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Demmer. Councilmember Kicker, did you get those couple things corrected in there? Okay, perfect. There's a couple little date issues. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed?
Abstain.
And that motion, those minutes are approved with one abstention, Councilmember Johnson.
I will accept all the appointments that you appointed me to in my absence.
You're in charge of everything.
Thank you.
It did seem a little self-serving, and you're asking them about all the orthopedic care. If you would have taken better care of yourself growing up.
That's right. I've been into Mercy a few times.
Next on our item, we've got our consent agenda. We have three items under our consent agenda. The first is to adopt Resolution 17-22 authorizing the sale of tax-forfeited property. Number five is to adopt Resolution 17-23, accepting a donation for senior services. And that would be a $500, or $500 gift card from Target at Riverdale for the senior center. And just want to go back to four for a second to make sure that there was, yeah, so, yeah. Item four was to adopt Resolution 17-22, okay. Item six, the third and last item on our consent agenda, is to adopt Resolution 17-13, approving the firefighter's healthcare savings plan.
Your Honor.
Councilmember Johnson?
I will move approval and adoption of Resolutions 17-22, -23, and -13, which are the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Johnson, second by Wells. Before we vote, can I get one clarification? Mr. Brown, on item four, authorizing the sale of tax-forfeited properties, two of those are, that are properties that are unbuildable, potentially, potentially sell to adjacent property owner and combine, and both of the ones that are listed as that really need to be divided between a few different people. Otherwise, we're going to have, one owner's going to own a chunk of property that are butts within about three feet of somebody else's house. How does the county disperse that?
Yes, Your Honor, we will talk with the county about the best way of dividing that up. I would agree that a couple of those would result in some very odd lot configurations if they were simply disposed or conveyed to a single adjacent property owner. So we'll, we'll talk with them to make sure of that.
So we don't just like, say, you've got carte blanche to sell these, you can sell these, but we really need you to look at these? Because otherwise, those are going to come back and be a problem for us later.
Right, right.
You know, to sell 25 feet of a strip behind three different properties to one person, then, yeah. Okay, so that was my question. Any other discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? And the consent agenda is adopted. We have no public hearing, we have no bid opening and contract awards, I'm sorry, other bid openings and contract awards. We have item seven, which is to consider Resolution 17-6/9, awarding the contract for the 2017 sanitary sewer lining program. And it looks like, I always have trouble saying that company name. Instiform?
In situ form. Did I get it right?
In situ form.
Yeah, I got it right. Double bonus points.
Double bonus points. All right. So, and this is our, this should be the last time we're looking at sewer lining for a while, right?
That is correct, Mr. Mayor. That'll put your rest.
It's all 80 miles that are publicly owned and maintained.
Wow. Excellent. All right. Also, your wishes?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 17-6/9, awarding the contract to In Situ Form Technologies USA Incorporated in the amount of $831,483 for the 2017 sanitary sewer lining program.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Kicker. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. All right. Under new business, consider station area plan, Riverdale Transit Station Sherman Associates. Mr. Harlecker?
Yes.
Will you have more or less to tell us than that hospital expansion?
Considerably less.
Going to hold you to that.
While you're queuing that up, Mr. Harlecker, I have a question under the commercial building. And it says, "The commercial building will be constructed when a tenant is found." So this is a build it and they will come, this is not a build it and they will come, this is a build it if they come. So we may never actually get a commercial building there.
I think we can address that in the presentation at the...
Okay, then I'll wait.
At the planning commission meeting, they did talk about building that as part of Phase One.
Good. Thank you.
I'm sorry about this.
Okay.
That's not it.
You need Councilmember Demmer to come down there and take care of that for you?
Just reboot it.
I do have, old school, we have paper copies that we can zoom in on. But let me get started on this. It is a concept plan for the development of the Riverdale Station area. It's located between the, if we could zoom in on the paper copy here, please. It's located between the North Star Station here and the Shopping Center to the north. This is Target building here with Northdale on the right here. And this was really set up back in 2010 with the approval, adoption of the Riverdale Station Transit District. This is really the first phase of, or the first step in the development of this site. It was initially set up and as similar to what was done in the Port Districts and Gateway Commerce Center, where there's approval of a concept, overall development plan for the site. Then as each component of the project comes in, they come back through with individual site plan reviews. And this is a 15-acre parcel consisting primarily of apartment buildings and a small commercial spot here at the intersection of Northdale Boulevard and the current street or drive coming into service, the North Star Station. Phase One, it's proposed to be a two-phase project. Phase One would be the construction of four-story apartment buildings and a one-story commercial The first phase will be 184-unit market rate apartment here, and then a 71-unit mixed-income apartment building over in this area here, this L-shaped building. Second phase would consist of senior apartments to senior apartment buildings on the north end of the site, a 92-unit building and a 76-unit building. Each of the buildings will have underground parking, as well as surface parking in the center of the site. There is a second proposed access coming out onto Northdale at this location here. So you have an access here and here going into the site. The buildings are supposed to be four-story buildings. The buildings are supposed to be four-story buildings. The maximum height limit for these sections of the building here, and here is thirty feet. With four stories, you'll be above that thirty-foot maximum height. So as part of the approval process, when these structures do come in for site plan approval, they'll also be asking for design and dimensional flexibility for certain components of the project. And along here, it will be for the height of the building as well as the setback. The maximum setback allowed is twenty feet. They're proposing somewhere between forty and fifty feet. Again, that's to allow some relief to the height of the building. And then there'll also be landscaping between the building and Northdale Boulevard to soften those edges. The apartments along the station street here are also be four-story buildings. These will also need dimensional flexibility because of the setback requirements. And again, that'll be done at the time they come in for site plan review. The one-story commercial building here will need flexibility because code requires two-story high buildings. What they're proposing here is a one-story high structure. Looking at the edges of the project, you've got balconies on these here to kind of give some view here for the potential redevelopment of the properties to the north. Along here, here, and here, you'll have first-floor access out onto the street. That'll give more of a softening of the edges and provide kind of a eyes-on-the-street perspective for public safety and marketability. All of the buildings here will have balconies also on the upper floors. There is a connection here between these two buildings, a two-story, they called it a tunnel on the plan, but it's more of a skyway connecting the two buildings. So you'll be able to go from one building to the other without having to have to go outside. Open spaces, there's, there's three parks or recreational areas proposed for the project. Top lot over here, more of a pocket park here, and a larger, kind of a central park at this location here. They're all connected with sidewalks along here and coming out and connecting to the sidewalk along Northdale Boulevard. As you can see here, there's also a sidewalk proposed along the station street. So it's well-connected with respect to pedestrian access. There's also proposed pedestrian connections to the park and ride facility, this location here, and then at this location here. Views of the site as you're coming in, as you're coming down this way here, this will be kind of an enhanced corner of building elevation, so it's not just a plain sight coming in. As you come in this way here, you'll have the view of the park as you're coming in. And then from this corner down here, you've got the commercial building, the public plaza as you're coming north on Northdale. As you're coming in this location here, you've got kind of a tree-lined view coming in with views of the park as you're coming into the site. This area here is really strictly pedestrian access. There won't be any vehicular access through there. Parking, each of the buildings will have underground parking. Code requires one space per unit. They are under that minimum requirement, so they will need flexibility with respect to that. At the planning commission meeting, they did indicate that it's been their past experience that the underground parking isn't as utilized as one might expect, and that the, what they're proposing for underground parking should be sufficient. As far as above-ground parking, three of the four buildings comply with the one to, one point five units per acre requirement. There is a, the one viewing, the market rate building has one point four units, spaces per unit, so it's just slightly under the requirement. Signage, the Transit District code did not anticipate monument-style signs or ground signs. They are proposing one here, a couple here, and I believe one up in this area here. Those signs would also require design flexibility to allow for the ground signs. At the planning commission meeting, they were concerned about access, primarily this spot here. They really saw this as becoming more of a principal access coming into the site because it does come into the center. The underground parking for all the buildings is accessed off of that main, that street coming in there. So they were concerned about, well, how is this going to, intersection here going to be redeveloped and to allow for all the different turning movements? The, they asked about the parks, whether they would be private or public. At this point, that has not been determined yet. The streets and parking areas in here are public. The station street is owned by Metro Transit, so they'll have to work out a maintenance and use agreement with Metro Transit on how that street will be used and maintained. The design of the commercial building was discussed. They wanted to make sure that it would fit the same character as the rest of the apartment buildings in the project. The applicant said it would, and the commission did include an extra condition in their recommendation that the architecture on all the buildings within development will be consistent, tying the development to that into the rest of the project. With that, the planning commission did recommend approval of the proposed concept plan based on the four findings in the staff report and with three conditions. Those conditions being improvements to the central open space that will enhance its desirability as a gathering place for the development. The design of the intersection at the secondary access here must be finalized prior to submission of site plans for individual buildings. And then the third condition, architecture on all the buildings within the development will be consistent. And the applicants are here in the audience to answer any questions also.
Excellent, thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
I have a few questions about this development, and one of the ones you just mentioned, which is the access that you characterize as a secondary access, but I see it as potentially becoming a primary access unless it's a one-way entrance only. So as an ability to enter there, but then if you leave the development, you would leave at a, at a safer, frankly, exit that is on that Metro Transit side. And you could enter there, too. But I've got some concerns about that being an uncontrolled intersection and because it comes right into the middle, it becoming a significant problem. Is there any access to the north that is public street? There's the kind of back lot of the parking lot for the commercial district that's just north of there. Is there a street thoroughfare that goes through there, or is that all privately owned?
Councilmember Johnson and Mayor Cook, that is a private street going back there, access to the parking lot. They did allow for, if this area was at some time redeveloped, there is enough space here between the two buildings to provide a street connection into this site. At this point, they're just proposing a sidewalk connection to the north.
So that's one of my concerns. My second question is, is this a build-out of the entire parcel that the City of Coon Rapids acquired from the county? I'm assuming it is because of the shape and layout, but this would include the extra, whatever it was, seven acres that we acquired. And so it's markedly different from the original proposal that we got, where it would be building out that back lot later. Did we have in the original plans a proposal for senior housing in this area?
I'll have to defer.
I thought so. Mr. Ferneilias?
Yes, I'm Mr. Mayor of the Village of Colson, Councilmember Johnson. Yes, the original concept plan envisioned senior housing, I want to say that the density was somewhere around ninety units. This is, this is larger. But part of what the developer has offered is basically, I think, kind of a higher intense use of the site, better utilization of the land. So that's certainly something that we can, you know, take a look at as we go forward. But we had always envisioned that there would be some kind of senior housing on the north end of the state.
That's helpful for me to have your assistance in recalling that. I mean, I actually like the plan and the layout and the design, and the fact that it utilizes what I had opposed us acquiring was that seven acres, because I said it's going to become a glorified park or outlot, and now it's going to become new stormwater treatment. So at least it's being used, and we've got a better utilization of the main property that fronts on Northdale. So that, those are my questions, and thank you.
Councilmember Geisler?
I think to reiterate what Councilmember Johnson talked about, I think the traffic is probably the biggest concern on Northdale. And understanding what is the traffic pattern, and I would think with the site plan that we would require a traffic study to understand what was needed, because, and maybe Mr. Hammer, you could help me, that, to me, the distance from where the light is coming into the current park and ride, the distance between that to where the middle of the site is, would you ever do two signals that close to each other?
Councilmember Geisler, members of the council, putting two signals in that close proximity just creates other issues that go with it.
Right.
So there was a cursory traffic analysis done, there are a few more things we've asked for and will look at. You know, we've looked, we've talked about right in, right out, or the ability just to maybe do a left in, but not be able to take a left out. If you wanted to make that northbound maneuver, you'd have to go to the south. But it's going to be based on are these public or private, and where, it's too large of a development to have a single access point.
Right.
And so trying to find that secondary point, it makes sense for what they're trying to do to split the development north and south, but having a full access in that location could be difficult. But there's plenty of widths where we could put turn lanes or bypass lanes, things of that nature, and we've talked about maybe that three-quarter type access.
Okay, thank you. So I think whenever we start to see things coming back, understanding and having a full plan of what is the traffic movement is going to be critical. And then just a couple other side comments for the places where we may need dimensional flexibility. I'm okay at the higher heights of the, especially when we're pulling the buildings back farther, so both of those flexibilities seem to make sense to me. If we're going up, I bring it back off the street a little bit more from the other neighbors. And the single story of the commercial, when it's offset with the higher building behind, it, to me, meets the intent of why we were looking for two-story expression, two-story buildings, kinds of things in the space. And then lastly, I would question, and I would want to actually look in detail at the parking numbers. So when we started to see, you know, what truly is the ratio of what we're asking versus what's there with the underground parking, and to make sure that when those things come back with the site plan to say, we're only planning point eight spaces per unit, that we actually have the data to substantiate, because in my memory from planning, I wouldn't have said that that necessarily would be reasonable unless it was a senior building. That makes sense for senior, doesn't in my mind make sense for market rate. And so I would want to make sure that we have that data to understand doing any flexibility there. That, or there would have to be cross easements or ability for people to potentially park at the park and ride, which I'm not sure if Metro Transit's really, you know, want that, right? So, to me, the parking was the other piece of flexibility that I wasn't really comfortable with, and would need more data.
Councilmember Demmer?
So I think this is a very attractive building. I think it's, I like the fact that we've got some height. I definitely like it better farther off the road. I think that's a good trade. If we're going to do flexibility, the flexibilities all make sense to me. I was going to ask how full on an average day that park and ride parking spot is, because I absolutely could see people using it as guest parking, vice versa. I could see some people saying, I'm just going to park in that, you know, in the lots for the new building, because it's closer to the train than these far, you know, so I could see people parking in the wrong places. I don't, you know, I'm not saying that's a reason to slow anything down, just that we might need appropriate signage or whatever. I don't know the rules on the monument signage and why that needs flexibility. I guess the, whenever that sort of thing comes up, I just want to make sure we're being fair to what we would do for somebody else. So I've seen signs about that size in other places along Coon Rapids Boulevard, so it doesn't bother me.
I think it's the quantity of signs, isn't it?
Yeah, Councilmember Demmer and members of the council, when we did the design standards for this zoning district, it was contemplated that the buildings would be much closer to the street and thereby not having any room for monument signs. With this design, there is the space to put monument-style signs in there, and I think they're probably needed to get the proper direction for people coming into the project.
That makes plenty of sense, and I like the idea that you put a few trees in there and that kind of takes away the giant building look. So I, all that looks good, it looks like a lot of people did a lot of homework on this.
My question on this is, as I went to the open house that they had back in the civic center, and the neighbors had concerns that seemed to be somewhat satisfied except for traffic. It just kept coming back, to traffic, to traffic, to traffic. And I would really like to know that we're doing something to help those neighbors get in and out of that neighborhood before we drop this many units into, you know, further ruin their day. Do we have anything in the works for fixing their traffic situations before we plop this in?
Yeah.
Councilmember Wells, you got the answer?
No, I was going to say, there really isn't an answer, because the movement, you know, is that left turn coming out of the neighborhood, and I don't see where there's a solution to that.
At least you make it an entrance-only.
No, I mean, I'm talking the neighborhood up here.
Across the street.
Is that one-twenty-third? You know, that left turn, you know, the, one of the things I heard neighbors say also is that that left turn is already almost impossible to make, and if you're going to add all these units. And the trouble is, there really isn't a good way to get out of that neighborhood to get to a traffic signal, because there's not a signal farther south either. So I'm not sure how you'd correct that issue for them. And that was the number one complaint I've heard also.
Yeah. At, when they do their next reiteration, iteration of the traffic study, they will include that intersection at one-twenty-third and Northdale as part of their project. The study they've submitted to date shows the traffic coming at those two intersections there to be at acceptable levels, levels A and B. I believe the only, there's one level C in the morning, I think it is, and that would be left turns coming out of this point and going north on Northdale. The other turning movements at peak times are at level A and B service, which is good service. But again, they didn't include that one-twenty-third in their preliminary study. That will be included in their next, the next step.
Boy, if there was something we could do with that target, to get a cross easement on that, on their baggage road and put the stoplights at one-twenty-third and Northdale, you know, it would be kind of close to the stoplights at one-twenty-fourth, but I don't know what else you would do to help those people get out of that neighborhood.
They have one-twenty-third and one-twenty-first essentially to get out.
Yeah, and there's no lights at one-twenty-first. Yeah, and there's no lights at 121st.
No.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Chris Kowicki.
I'd just like to point out that the residents in Ward One that I spoke to all have that same concern as with traffic. Councilmember Wells made up a good point. The intersection at 123rd is actually kind of unsafe as it is. There's people coming around on the shoulder and, and bypassing. It's an illegal move, but it's, it's, it's unsafe. So the residents that are back in there, 123rd, Down Lily, and to a smaller extent, down at 121st, it doesn't show here on the map really well, but there's, the road is curved, so your sight line is impaired. I really would like to see, as Councilmember Geisler recommended, a, a traffic pack plan or something that really verifies if that's gonna be okay for those residents and how to address that.
That hopefully will be forthcoming.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Any other questions or comments from council? Seems like we're just stuck on traffic.
It seems to be that.
It's a traffic jam.
I mean, I, mayor and councilmembers, you know, no matter how the site develops, it's gonna be traffic generated. And with a residential development like this, it generates considerably less traffic than if you were to make this office commercial. So as if, as far as traffic generators, residential units are low on the scale compared to commercial and office, to try to put up perspective on things.
And, and it doesn't seem fair to this project or these developers, but it isn't fair to the neighbors when they're already having troubles to further exacerbate that by putting these in without some fix. So, yeah. All right, anything else? I think we have a motion on this one. Don't we? You want us to read all of those motions, sir, Mr. Brown?
So, Mr. Mayor, I'll take this one. So in Planning Case 16-29, I would move to accept the Planning Commission recommended approval of the proposed station area plan based on their findings, A, B, and C, sub one, two, three, four, five, and six, D, and then the following, and three stated conditions from the planning report. Is that good? Otherwise, you'd be here for another twenty minutes.
I'll second it.
We have a motion by Geisler and a second by Johnson. Discussion?
I'll just make a couple comments. I, I think it's the right thing to be developing this area, I think, directionally correct and a lot of the right things. We've got some dimensional flexibility and things that will, I think, will be easy to do. There are a couple of things, traffic, parking, are gonna be the two things we'll need to dive deeper into as the site plans come through, but from a general perspective, the, this, you know, general plan that we're approving tonight is the right way, direction to go.
Any other discussion? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Alker. Your Honor. Councilmember Wells?
I may want to mention, since I live right in that area, that if you come out 123rd and take a right and take another right on 124th, it's just as fast to get to the Rapids High School as it would be to go Northdale Boulevard, in a lot less hectic.
Absolutely.
So two rights, do you make a left?
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Item nine on our agenda, consider the 2016, 2017 insurance renewals. And we have a couple choices because we just can't talk about that sewer backup enough. Anybody want any highlights from the text here, from the, Ms. Legg, you want to talk about this, or?
If there's four, four items here that we really need your guidance on. First of all, we, we're recommending that we have a $50,000 deductible up to an annual aggregate of $200,000. We do that to save money over having like a normal $1,000 deductible, but by doing that, I think it saves like about $241,000. And we do not have that many claims that are over $50,000 or over $25,000 even in terms of cost. The other thing is, there's a new insurance that we're recommending that be purchased for the seized vehicles that the police department seizes. This protects those vehicles. Some of these vehicles are getting to be higher-end vehicles. We're putting some of them in storage, but sometimes there's theft from those vehicles, so we're recommending $225,000 in coverage for that. And then maintaining the legal liability or the legal limits for liability at one and a half million. And then the recommendation on the no-fault sewer backup. So staff has recommended in the past that we not buy it. The council's wanted to buy it. I just looked at it. There were twelve claims in 2016 that the city paid, and they amounted to about $74,000 or so in terms of what the city paid by having that, that policy in place. And essentially what that does is we pay up to $10,000, assuming the homeowner does not have insurance, and there's no fault assigned for the sewer backups. So we do need a resolution on that decision. So there's four items there that we're asking for guidance on.
Your Honor? Councilmember Demmer?
So I'll play the part of former Councilman Manning here.
Thank you.
You know, someone's having a really bad day, and we only make it worse if we, if we don't do the, the sewer backup insurance. And I, I know it costs us some money, but man, if it was my house, I sure, sure would wish they had done it. So I, I would be in favor of purchasing the sewer backup. I feel like that was the right decision the last couple of years and, and anyway, that would be my preference.
Your Honor, I would agree with that. And in reading through the whole proposal, it seems like the city has a lot of protections to not get burned with too much money, so I don't have a problem with it either.
Okay. So is that a motion for one of you?
I'll, I'll make the motion. Jeez, there's a lot of motion here. All right. Going to move Resolution 17-24, purchasing sewer backup liability insurance, which all the other bullets, which include purchasing insurance through LMCIT with a $50,000 deductible up to an annual aggregate of $200,000, purchasing optional insurance coverage for seized and forfeited vehicles with a limit of $225,000, and maintaining statutory legal limits of $1.5 million per occurrence. Got them all, all right.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Wells, and just as clarification, that did include that last bullet point, purchasing sewer backup liability insurance.
I did that one first.
Yeah, I did that.
Had the one next to it. Yeah, yeah.
All right. Any other discussion on that?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Chris Kowicki.
I'm not exactly clear, did we have that optional backup sewer coverage in 2016 when we paid the $78,000 worth of claims? So it was good we had it.
This is, this, this is a tough one because what happens is, if we don't have the insurance and we're found to be up with all of our maintenance on them, we're not, we're found not responsible, so the homeowner's on their own. In, in previous years when we've discussed this, and my point has always been, they can't go to somebody else and buy their sewer and water service. They have to come to us. So even if we're doing all the maintenance, if there's an inadvertent backup into their home, I really feel like we should help them out. They should go buy their own insurance. That's the first thing, they should go buy their own insurance. But if they don't have it, as Councilmember Demmer says, we've just made their bad day worse. So maybe Ms. Legg would have a different answer or a better answer for you, but...
That was, to me, that was a very good answer, so I don't really think there's much to add. But it did cost us, you know, by, not only did we pay the premium of $16,000, but we also paid the claims of $70,000 as well. So it does cost, you know, and it's a fairly significant number, so we have to be aware of that. And homeowners do have the option of buying sewer backup coverage on their own, and many people do, and this only kicks in if they don't have it. But it, you know, you can get it, but it's just that if, for those people that don't have it, you know, we can provide up to $10,000.
Okay. A follow-up question?
Sure.
For Mr. Hammer. Is the fact that we're doing the sewer relining, does that expose us maybe to more of a liability? If, you know, with this right now, or?
Actually...
Have we had issues there?
It's kind of a catch-22, and that's why I say we're lining all of our public lines. Most of the service lines that are out there to people's homes are clay lines, which end up with root intrusion. So we come through and we line the mains, and we'll look up the services and we'll send people letters that say, this is what we found in your service. You should probably get this addressed. You own all the way to the main, and then that starts a whole different conversation of, well, why don't you own to here? Then they'll go and they'll send the roto-ruder or somebody in, they'll cut the roots out. We don't get notified. They push them out into the main, and we just televise it a week before everything was clean, and now this big root mass ends up in a bad spot, which then creates a backup, which affects more people than just that individual. So what we're doing is the right thing to do for those mains, but there's a whole lot of service intrusions that, you'll get root growth that start, you know, five feet outside your house, and it'll work its way down that service line, and we'll, we'll get roots growing out in our main through the service lines. We have no recourse to go into those lines, so there are some times we have to work with people to try to clean those out. From a, from a overall perspective, it's the right thing to do, but there's still that ownership line of mains versus services, and that, that creates secondary issues.
I was just gonna retell the whole story from five years ago, but we'll just let that. Seems like we're going the right way.
There you go.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you. Item 10 on our agenda is to consider Resolution 17-25, amending the 2017 facility construction budget and authorizing the purchase of the fire alerting system. And we had the $187,000 for the purchase of the alerting system for all three fire stations in the budget, but we did not have the $37,167.67 to install it. So we just need to amend our budget if we actually want to get that equipment installed. Chief Piper, could you just tell us what that does, just for the public, kind of give them a, what does that alerting system do for the city?
When, excuse me, when the public calls 911, it goes up to our dispatch center at Anoka County. Currently, the call taker takes the information, the call goes into the system, it becomes what we call pending. Then when the fire dispatcher has time, because the fire dispatcher is also a call taker, so when he or she gets the call, if they're not on the phone, they can get the call out in a, in a, in a quick manner, but if they're on the phone, obviously, they need to finish the call. So there can be delays. So with the new system, once this call goes into what, into the call pending category, it immediately through the system gets dispatched to all three fire stations. There's no dispatcher involved. It's all automated, so we get the calls a lot quicker. Reliability, the system, the current system was put in place about fifteen years ago, and it's at the end of its life and, and getting tired. Another issue is that currently, the firefighters are shocked into action, if you want to call it that, and get some pretty good adrenaline rushes when we go out on our 6,000 calls a year. This is the kindler-gentler wake-up, and it's called the HeartSafe because we know, we know from experience through met, through testing that many adrenaline rushes are not good for the body. This is what is called HeartSafe, where it wakes you up more in a gentle manner, and instead of getting the bright white lights, another component is the, the red lights come on, so in other words, you're not blinded, you can get up. So, and there's a couple other things, but in the interest of time, that's kind of the brief version of the benefits that the system brings to our fire stations.
Interesting. I didn't realize there was a thing of how you woke up.
I'm gonna change my alarm tonight. Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion.
All right.
I'd move adoption of Resolution 17-25, amending the 2017 facility construction budget to authorize the purchase of fire station emergency alerting system and its installation.
Second. Everybody's quick to second that one. Motion by Johnson, and I think Councilmember Demmer was the second on that one first. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Did I get the right second over here, or was it yours?
It was, it was close between you.
All right. All right. Item 11 on our agenda, oops, consider Resolutions 17-26 and 17-27 levy of miscellaneous 2016 sub-three appealed assessments. This reflects the recommendations of the Board of Adjustment and Appeals on contested miscellaneous special assessments. The assessment hearing on miscellaneous assessments was held on November 1st, 2016. Property owners who were objecting to their assessments were referred to the Board of Adjustment and Appeals for review at their meeting on January 5th. After the Board of Adjustment and Appeals heard the objections on January 5th, the following recommendations have been made, and we have thirteen, thirteen different assessments.
Mayor and council, I'll just point out that a couple of these have been paid, so... The current amount between the two resolutions is $8,804. So I've got an updated list here, but we'll split those two amounts for the two resolutions in the morning, just in case there's any more payments remaining.
Okay. And an assessment fee of $35 has been included in the recommendations, in the totals, and you're gonna give us the update tomorrow. All right.
Your Honor?
Councilmember Demmer?
I have a question. There are two of them here that were listed as Board of Adjustments' recommendation rescind. The last minutes that I had found for those two, the action requested was to affirm. So I, the two are 17-04V says rescind here, but I've only, the agenda item...
And 09V.
Yeah. Case number five from the appeals, it says affirm the $300 special assessment, and then the same thing for 1709. So I just wasn't sure if there was something that happened between that meeting on the 5th where something got its mind changed, or if it was just recorded wrong in the minutes from those meetings.
Mayor and council, I don't know the answer to that. I'm hoping Chris would grant us. I don't know if she does. Okay, good.
Yeah, both of those cases, 1704 and 1709, the board did vote to rescind those.
Okay, so the minutes, or the, oh, so it isn't the minutes, it's the, the action requested was to affirm, but then in the actual vote, they decided to rescind instead?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Your Honor? Councilmember Kowicki?
So what dictates whether it's one year or three years?
Mayor and council, it's the dollar amount. And I actually can't remember if it's $2,000, but after a certain dollar amount, then we put it on for three years, just so it's a more reasonable payment. So that's the only logic there.
Counsel, any other questions, or is there a motion?
Move that the council adopt Resolutions 17-26 and 17-27, adopting 2016 sub-three miscellaneous special assessments, one and three-year.
All right.
Second.
Motion by Demmer, second by Kowicki. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Chris Kowicki?
I just have a comment, and that is that the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, I thought, did a really good job looking at these, noted the two rescissions. I think they took a very conscientious approach to this. They made sure policy was followed. They were very polite with our constituents, our citizens' concerns were heard. I thought the whole process, in my view, was done very well.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Item 12 is our 2017...
Mr. Mayor?
We're not up to open mic here, Mr. Pierce.
My concern is not under open mic. It is under the process of the green grass. You go out there, and you had the hearing, you had, what, 25 people there? And then they come up with, you only have five minutes to present your case. Now that's boxing things in. To appeal something like that, there's a lot, lot of mistakes been made, and I want to bring them up. And I'll bring them up at the next meeting. I'm asking the council to set on the agenda an appeal from the council, and the mistakes be brought up, the people who were at that appeals be notified, and that this stuff with the assessments and that be taken up under the, the, uh, 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 the, in front of the council, that they can come in and appeal it.
Okay.
Now, if there wasn't that much notification...
Mr. Pierce, we just gave you quite a bit of movement there, but we're going to move on with our meeting now. Thank you, sir.
I have a question for the council now.
Are you speaking under open mic? We're not there yet, sir. And we're not taking public comments on the assessments.
I lose two minutes.
Thanks, Mr. Pierce. Good night.
Good night.
Number 12 is our 2017 legislative priorities. The City Council will consider the city's legislative priorities for the 2017 State of Minnesota Legislative Session. We have multiple items that are specific to Coon Rapids. Item one is the Hanson Boulevard Railroad grade separation, which it sounds like we've got a House and a Senate number on now, right? Moving along. We're back down there for our five-year TIF extension for the Port Riverwalk District. Is that enough? Aren't we going for more than five years?
We had initially gone for both a five-year extension as well as a change to the base tax rate. We have not yet determined, we, we need to kind of determine the direction of this session and figure out exactly what we're going to be asking for, so there'll be more to come on that.
All right, thank you. Number three is a great, the Greater Minnesota Gateway, which is the Highway 10 and 169 corridor. That includes construction of an underpass at Fair Oak Avenue and a full interchange at Thurston Avenue in the city of Anoka, adding one traffic lane on East and West Highway 10 between Hanson Boulevard and Round Lake Boulevard in the city of Coon Rapids. Construction of a grade-separated intersection at Sunfish Lake Boulevard and Ramsey Boulevard in the city of Ramsey, and this improvement will be proposed in a future legislative session, once the other projects have received funding. And then fourth, Highway 610 and Interstate 94. The city supports initiatives to fully complete connections and expand capacity along the Highway 10, or, I'm sorry, the Highway 610 to I-94 corridor, including a full interchange at Coon Rapids Boulevard. I like that. And then we also would be looking at the, League of Minnesota Cities have all of their priorities, and Metro Cities have all of their priorities, and I don't think any of those really conflict with our priorities, so... We're looking for an official council action on that? Mr. Stemwell?
Yes, Mayor and Council, I think we are just looking for you to make motion and consider those four items, just so that we've sort of got that flag staked in the ground as we go forward and try to make these things happen in the 2017 session.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Kicker?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the items listed as the city's 2017 legislative priorities.
Second.
Motion by Kicker, second by Grischowiak. Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right. And those are approved.
Your Honor, just one question. So then, do we send these to our representatives or something like that?
Again, yes. We reaffirm it with them.
We actually give it to them. Good.
We used to have a, where they would actually come in and visit our council meeting or our workshop once in a while. Do we do that anymore? Or do they, Mr. Stemwell?
Mayor and Council, yeah, we, I know from time to time in the past, we've attempted that. It seems like it becomes very difficult during the legislative session, that the attendance was becoming problematic, and sort of in that space between the election and the new year also was problematic. So I think in a lot of these cases, we see our legislators fairly frequently this time of year. Certainly, we are able to advocate for these things during that time. However, if, if council desires, we can certainly try to schedule something in a work session with this group, just to hear from them, how things are going down at the Capitol.
It usually requires a fire truck to... We'll be working on that again with the Hanson grade separation.
Yeah, that's true. When you got that bucket truck out, they all showed up. All right. Did we have a vote on that yet? We did, yes. Oh, that was after, question after.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. All right. So next on our agenda is the open-mic public comment portion of the meeting. Open mic provides an opportunity for the public to address the City Council on subjects that are not part of the regular meeting agenda. The public is invited to express any concerns they may have, which are relevant to the affairs, policies, or practices of the city of Coon Rapids. Remarks will be limited to three minutes. Should you wish to participate in open mic, please approach the podium, state your name and address before addressing the council. All remarks will be made from the podium and addressed to the council as a whole. Open mic is not a time for problem-solving or reacting, but for hearing the speaker for informational purposes only, and if necessary, a staff report will be prepared for the next regular council meeting with a copy forward to the speaker. Yes, sir.
Jerry Pierce, 12236 Partridge Street. Mr. Mayor, you denied me a, a portion of what you had on the agenda, and that was for the assessments, and I wanted to appeal it to the council. Now, any council person can request that it goes on the agenda as agenda, not on open mic. Now, it's up to you. I think the people should be, start to be, get heard in this city the way we were back in the 50s and 60s. Mayor, I think you better start looking at resigning. I really do.
Okay, Mr. Pierce.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else to address council for open mic this evening? All right. Other business?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Geisler?
I have a couple of things. One, Sunday, Alloy Brewing had a fabulous open house here at City Hall to taste beers. We have a representative here, I don't know if we want to talk a little bit about that, but that was fabulous, and was from 2:00 to 6:00, and there were people lining up the, out the door, and I got there a little bit later, and some of the beers already gone because it was so popular. So I think that's a great thing that we should be looking forward to. The next thing to remind is January 24th, we have our goose management plan meeting. If you want to learn about managing geese, have fun, come on over. And then the other thing is on Wednesday, January 25th, at Anoka-Ramsey, the League of Women Voters is hosting a meet your legislate, legislators meeting. So that's another place where we can go, and we can talk about our priorities, but all of the citizens are, are welcome to come meet those people who represent you down at the state Capitol. That's, it starts at 6:00 PM at Anoka-Ramsey.
Do you know what the format is for that? I was trying to figure it out. It almost sounds like it's round tables or something, because it involves the student senate, and it talks about having informal discussions, so I wasn't sure what the format is for that.
Not exactly sure of the format, but they'll be there, and you can bring your ideas.
Okay, excellent. Yeah, the Alloy Brewing, that was a fabulous open house. Father Duffner sent me a text, though. He said, "You were out of hell's bellows." I'm not sure why the guy with the Roman collar had right for that one, but they were out.
He's doing a good job.
Any other business to come before council this evening?
Your Honor?
Councilmember Johnson?
I would just like to say something, and I hate to bring up something that's kind of sad, but the city and the community lost a really great citizen recently, and that was Art Dusel, who was a longtime principal of Anoka Senior High. And I know that there are many people who live in Coon Rapids who went to Anoka Senior High. He was a principal there when my father was in high school, he was a principal there my first year in high school. So he was there for 26 years, and he was really a pillar of the community, but more importantly, he was somebody who made a wonderful impact, a positive impact, on literally generation upon generation of people in Anoka County. And so there is a memorial service and a visitation. The visitation will be between 4:00 and 7:00 PM on Friday at Zion Lutheran Church in Anoka, that's on Fourth Avenue. And then the funeral service will be at 11:00 AM on Saturday, on the January 21st. And so my heart goes out to the Dusel family and, and all those friends and family members of his.
Thank you. That's an important distinction, because when he was there, that was Coon Rapids High School. I mean, everybody from Coon Rapids went to high school there.
Right, right.
All right. Any other business to come before council? Mr. Stemwell, anything? No kidding? All right. Any open houses coming up? When is Alloy going to open? Do we know yet?
This spring. We're going to open this spring.
This spring? Can nail it down to that, huh?
We're getting it.
Everybody's anxious. Clearly, clearly they are ready for it.
Yes.
All right. Motion to adjourn?
When we did the Snowflake Days proclamation, I did look it up, it is coonrapidsnowflakedays.webly.com. So...
Right, Google it.
Just thought I'd, in case anyone's going to type it in the long way.
All right. Thank you. Anybody want to adjourn this?
Second.
Motion by Geisler, and second by Demmer to adjourn. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Adjourned.